Okay, I would like to call the order to the City of Hawaiian Gardens Planning Commission for Wednesday, March 23rd. Could we all stand for the flag salute, please?
Do I have a reword?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Navarro?
Here.
Vice Chair Member Rodriguez?
Here.
Chair Member Winford?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Council, do we have any pre-meeting protocols that need to be read at this time, as we have done in recent times?
Yeah, the city clerk will have that.
Thank you.
Today's meeting is open to the public with limited seating capacity to allow for social distancing. Virtual viewing and participation opportunities are still being provided. All members who attend the meeting are strongly recommended to wear face mask and or face shield at all times. Please note that in light of AB 361, tonight's meeting is being conducted as a hybrid virtual meeting and in-person meeting. Staff will practice social distancing and will follow public health and safety guidelines. City officials, staff, and members of the public may participate at any time in the city council chamber, subject to social distancing and virtually using the Zoom platform.
Thank you. At this time, we are going to have the public hearing comments and for things that are general to the nature of which the planning commission oversees and/or has jurisdiction. If you would like to speak to us on items of any sort related to what the planning commission's general nature, can you come forward, state your name and address for the record, and then let us know what you'd like to say?
Hi. My name's Pavel Rivera. I'm actually here representing my client. His address is 12320-215th. So currently, we have a project going on. It's a possible SB9 unit project. And basically, I want to know when are you guys going to be ready for SB9? Because I've been, this passed back in, what, December? And we're literally practically April. And what turned into "I'll get back to you in a few weeks" turned into the city, it's in the city attorney's hands, and literally turned into, well, who do I contact at this point? Like, when is the city going to be ready? Other cities are already ready, and I've spoken to various planners from different cities. And from my understanding, what I'm proposing should be allowed, but ultimately, I don't understand what's the holdup in Hawaiian Gardens. If I don't know if anybody here can give me an answer regarding SB9?
Do you have something on that, Patrick?
Typically, the public comment isn't really a back-and-forth question and answer. Of course, your comment is well-taken. Myself and the city staff will undoubtedly get back to you as soon as possible. But right now, we kind of don't want to get into this back-and-forth during this public comment period. Thank you.
So, in other words, I get no answer, right?
So, Mr. Rivera, what we will do, and I can assure you this, is that I will see to it that staff makes contact to you and gives you appropriate answers and give you an option to where you can get regress for that, should the staff that should be handling this particular question, if they are unable to provide you that, what you could do to get some additional information for redress on your concerns. So, that's what we can do as a commission to be sure that it can be addressed. The details of it will need to be taken into account with the appropriate staff. So discussing that here really doesn't do anything other than to allow you to let us know your frustration with the speed to which your application for SB90 has, you know, not gone the way you thought it should be.
Okay.
So, but we will, and I think my fellow commissioners here will see to it that appropriate staff will make contact with you and with the intention to address your situation in a manner that will be timely.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Can, yeah. Can you take his contact info?
And I believe the city clerk will have that in the record. He did give his name
and address. We appreciate you taking the time to do this, and I can assure you that we will address this to the extent we can.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak for the planning, for the planning commission? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the reorganization of members of the planning commission. So, at this time, I would like to have...
Chair, the staff report will be extremely brief. Pursuant to Hawaiian Gardens Municipal Code 2.28090, the planning commission sets its own rules and procedures, namely, its own organization, chair and vice chair. I believe we did this early last year, and right now would be the time for you all to discuss, and amongst yourselves, the proper organization, i.e., who should serve as chair, who should serve as vice chair. There's no requirement that it change from the current. It is entirely at the discretion of the commission. And I believe, following the procedures that we did last time, we addressed chair first and then vice chair second. However, if the commission would like to reverse that, that is fine as well. I'm here available for any questions. That concludes my report. Chair Winford.
Thank you. So, what I would like to do is, we will have city staff, and I believe traditionally in the past, if we've had a city clerk here, that they have taken the names for nominees and...
Correct. Yeah. So typically, what we would do, and assuming that we go chair first, you know, anyone can nominate themselves or another member of the planning commission. Now, of course, if, you know, someone is adamant they do not want to serve as chair, I would encourage you all to kind of, you know, heed that and take that into consideration. But typically, what we did last time is, we kind of opened it up, as you said, Chair Winford, for quote-unquote nominations. You can nominate someone. You can nominate yourself. We would then do a roll call vote, provided we have, well, actually, we need to do a roll call vote no matter what. The chair would need to have a majority. You can, of course, vote for yourself. And that's typically how we would do it. So we would take nominees for the chair right now, provided we have one, two, three, however many. We would then do a roll call vote. If someone were to receive the, a majority of the quorum here, five, so they would need three votes to be elected chair, if that's the case, then that person would be elected chair effective next meeting. We would then repeat that same process for vice chair.
With that being said, I will, I wish to nominate our current chair, Grant Winford, as chair. So, if I can, do I need a second for that?
You do not, no.
Okay. Oh, I would like to nominate Vice Chair Anna Rodriguez.
I would also be interested in the vice chair position.
Just so I'm clear, Chair Winford, was your nomination for Vice Chair Rodriguez for chair or to continue for...
I would like to nominate Anna Rodriguez for chairperson.
Understood. Got it. So, give us, we'll get to vice chair the next one. So, as of right now, we have two nominees. That is current Chair Winford and current Vice Chair Rodriguez. Correct. And so typically, what we would do is, we would go with the first nominee. And now, once again, that nominee would need three votes, because here we have five people, so they would need three votes. If that, if that person were to receive three votes, then obviously, the other nominee would not get those three votes, and that would be the person elected chair.
So, we'll do a roll call vote for Grant. Commissioner Roman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Navarro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Member Rodriguez?
Yes.
Chair Member Winford? Motion carries.
Congratulations, Grant.
Thank you. I, the numbers was already there. I thought, okay.
And then, I'd like to, one, withdraw from any nomination for vice chair, and I'd actually like to nominate Commissioner Roman for vice chair.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing none. City clerk?
Commissioner Roman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Navarro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Member Rodriguez?
Yes.
Chair Member Winford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
And then, just for everyone's understanding, those will go into effect next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for your trust in me as your next vice chair.
And I want to thank you all for letting the old guy lead you one more time. So, thank you. I do appreciate that. I will try to live up to that which we are here to do, is serve our community in all things related to planning and land use and all those related things. So, thank you so much. I appreciate that. So, at this point in time, the next item is agenda organization. Is there any need from either the planning commission, any of our planning commissioners, or from staff to reorganize the agenda going forward from this point?
None for me.
Okay. So, we will then go on to item A1. This is a public hearing, a recommendation to adopt Resolution Number 2022-03, recommending approval to the Hawaiian Gardens City Council of General Plan Amendment 2022-01, the 2021-2029 Sixth Cycle Housing Element Update, and recommending approval of the negative declaration for the draft housing element, and make a recommendation of approval to the city council for the proposed project and its related application request. Staff, please, report.
Yes, we're going to turn it over to the consultant to make the presentation this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening. Is this thing on here? It's on. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations, members of the planning commission. About four months ago, we were here, all masked up, and we were talking about your housing element. Since that time, we have taken the housing element and submitted it to the Department of Housing and Community Development. Now, they sent the city a letter, which I think you have in your package, that identifies some of the issues that we have to address. Now, just to let you know, just because we have a lengthy letter doesn't mean that the housing element is deficient. Most cities get about 11 pages of comments. Even some of the best cities get 11 pages of comments. But, so, tonight, what we're going to try to do is, we will be talking about some of the changes that we are going to be making to the housing element based on the letter. Some of these changes are not structural changes. They're going to be perhaps identifying additional programs, et cetera, et cetera. But it doesn't really change the document that you had prior to this meeting. But what I would like to address in my presentation to you this evening is some of the key findings in the housing element. Some of the, because you guys are decision-makers of the city, some of the things that we found in the housing element that could be cause for policy changes, recommendations to the city council, et cetera, et cetera. So, without further ado, here we go. The first slide is actually the page. So, the current housing element expires, expired 2021. So, we started the process in 2021, so we're still, we're still on board. California Housing Law Regarding Housing Elements is in the second slide. Housing Element Update is for the 2021 to the 2029 cycle, which is the sixth cycle housing element. You would notice that it is actually for an eight-year period. So, whatever programs or analysis that we have in the housing element, we have eight years to implement them. Next one. We're stuck. There we go. So, again, just statutory information, where in the jurisdiction of SCAG, where one of the gateway cities of Los Angeles, what we actually are doing to the housing element is updating the previous housing element, which is the fifth cycle, and then a draft housing element to the HCD, revision and adoption of your housing element by the local agency. You are one of the first local agencies, so, planning commission, and then we're going to have city council, and then submittal of the housing element to HCD after both bodies have actually had an opportunity to comment on them. I'm pushing. Here we go. So, one of the specific changes in this housing element cycle is what is called the AFFH, AB 686, formally furthering fair housing. Are you going to see that language? I think you've seen that language in your housing element document. Basically, it says that we want to ensure that all residents have decent, safe, sanitary, affordable housing regardless of income. We want to remove any constraints on the development of housing, promote more high-density residential development. But more importantly, we want to preserve and improve the city's existing housing stock. Okay. So, we're going to prepare a housing element, launch its inventory. We're going to identify sites that we can use for additional housing. We want to provide adequate housing in the city for all economic segments, and again, preserve and maintaining existing housing stock. Equal opportunity access to housing, encourage new housing development through energy conservation, and so on and so forth. Okay. So, for the housing element process, the city is required to give adequate notice and hold a public hearing or hearings. This is the second one that we're having with the planning commission. And then, you, the planning commission then would make a recommendation to the city council based on the information that you received. I'm clicking, clicking. See if this thing changes. There we go. The city council may adopt your recommendation, which we hope they will. And then, after both city council and planning commissions, we will send the draft document to the HCD for approval. This way. Okay, great. Okay. So, one of the requirements of the housing element is the consistency with the general plan. And because the general plan is one of those, is the big document for the city that has several elements in it, housing element being one of them. And this is why your, the final decision that the city would take would be an amendment to the, to the general plan and not just approving your housing element. So, you'd be recommending to the city council that they amend the general plan to adopt the sixth cycle housing element based on the information that you have, you know, in your reports and questions or answers, or questions or comments that you may have. Okay. So, for, as far as environmental considerations, the city has processed a negative deck for the housing element, which should have been made available on the city's website and perhaps in your, in your package. Clicking, clicking, computer. Okay. This portion deals with community engagement, public participation, and this is the reason why we're having this meeting today. Prior to this meeting, in order to gather information on the housing element, we actually did a community survey. I don't know if any one of you had an opportunity to actually participate in the survey. The survey results were published in the housing element copies that you have, and it basically shows your concerns, issues, whatever it is, which kind of helps to shape, you know, the language of the housing element. So, what HCD requires us to do is, we take your comments, or comments from public participation process, and try to formulate policies and programs based on the comments that we receive. And you would see that. So, regional housing needs assessment has been one issue that every city has struggled with. The city of Hawaiian Gardens were allocated 331 housing units to build within the next eight years. They want us to do 61 very low-income units, 44 low-income units, 46 moderate-income units, and 180 above income, above moderate-income units. So, the skew here is, they want more high-end and less of the, of the very low and low income. So, between the moderate and the above moderate income, we're looking at over 226 housing units out of the 331. So, critical findings of significance. No surprise, Hawaiian Gardens is predominantly Latino-Hispanic community. About 80% of the population identifies as Latino Hispanic. Hawaiian Gardens has a 2020 total population of 13,393, which is actually a decrease from the 2010 census figure of 14,254. The educational attainment level is identified there. Household size, five persons per household is about 32% higher than the state average persons per household. Some of that could be based on cultural, socioeconomics, or other, or other issues, but this is what, this is what the findings are. And this is some of the things that you want to keep in consideration. The, south of Carson Street, residents are living below the poverty level, 61%, 61% to 86% of the residents living below the poverty level south of Carson Street. The portion of the city above Carson Street poverty level is supported at 0.21 to about 20.4. The 40% to 60% range is moderate compared to the county. In the northeast quadrant of the city, southwest quadrant, highest median, median income exists there, while in the northwest quadrant and the southeast quadrants, the lower median income bracket is less than $55,000. So, again, it shows some disparities. So, the city of Hawaiian Gardens doesn't just exhibit one particular characteristics. You can break the characteristics down on where geographically you are within the city. Between 21% and 40% of your households in the census tract at the northwest quadrant and the southeast quadrant of the city have children in female households with no spouse or partners, while the census tracts at the northeast quadrant and the southwest quadrant have between 14% to 18% of their households with children in female households with no spouse or parent. These numbers are higher than in the SCAG region. The city spans 0.97 square miles, population density of about 14,717 people per square mile. Average household income in Hawaiian Gardens is 57,733, poverty rate is about 23.9. Median rental income is, you know, $1,400, and the median household value is about 363,500. Now, these, these numbers may change, you know, depending on when they were measured, but this is the capsule for you. When the, when the housing element document was being put together, this is what we were able to identify. Portions of the city of Hawaiian Gardens have low educational scores. The education score domain is an indication of education, educational achievement and potential. The higher the score, the more the educational achievement, and therefore, more success. So, what this might mean for a community is, how do we translate this into an action? How do we want to take this particular thing and say, okay, we want to have more success in our community? What are the things that we're going to recommend to the city council that we do to make sure that we're not a city that has low educational scores? It could be anything that starts from early childhood education up and so on and so forth. So, these are some of the considerations. The environmental score is one thing that came up when we have our, when we had our joint city council and planning mission meeting. And the environmental score can be based on several factors, you know, proximity to the freeway, et cetera, et cetera. But I think it goes a little bit beyond that. So, because of the educational score, the results are that the city of Hawaiian Gardens is 51% to 100% less healthy than the SCAG region and the state. So, we go, why us? And, again, this can lead into policy recommendations. What do we do? Do we want to, do we want to go green? Do we want to plant more trees? What are the things that we can do to increase our education, our environmental score so that we're not being considered to, as a community, you know, that has, you know, lower environmental score? environmental score? Because that also ties into health. You're going to say, well, the, if your environmental score is, 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 is low, then your health is going to be, is going to be in the same category. That's just the correlation. Between 41% to 60% of Hawaiian Garden homeowners overpay for their mortgage or rent, which means that the cost of housing is high. So, for residents to be able to afford to live in Hawaiian Gardens, they have to pay a little bit more of their income for rent or mortgage. The industry average should be about 33%. No, you want to, you don't want to pay more than a third of, of your income for rent or mortgage. And, and again, I don't think a policy by the planning mission or city council is going to fix this, but these are all market-driven things. But it's, it's a matter of demand and supply. You know, maybe if we had more housing, then the prices would go a little bit down. You know, less housing you have, there's more competition, the higher, the higher the prices would go. Except that, you know, with, with COVID, you know, everything is skewed. So, another consideration. The median gross rent in all the four census tracts is less than $1,500. This is less than the SCAG region and the state, but more in the percentage of income paid by residents of the city based on their income. So, you might say, yeah, $1,500, however, because of the income being made by residents of this city, that $1,500 might be 50% or 60% of their, of the money that they bring home. So, again, it, it goes into the issue of affordability. Hawaiian Gardens is a vulnerable category of sensitive communities indicating that most of the city is prone to gentrification. And I think we talked about this before, and I think we talked about it when we had our, our Zoom meetings, we talked about gentrification. We, you know, there's some, there are pros to gentrification and there are cons to gentrification. There are certain things cities can do to, to make sure that even, even when we get gentrified, we don't basically just throw away some of the residents that are currently in the city. You know, the, the city attorney can advise you on ordinances, the city can pass. We cannot formulate what the market is going to be. You know, if a big, deep-pocket developer comes in and wants to do something really fabulous in the city and wants to buy everybody out, they may do that, but if you have an ordinance that says, well, if you buy everybody out, you just have to make sure that you pay for relocation for some of these lower-income families, et cetera, et cetera, that is a potential that we can weave into, into language that might help when we have issues with, issues of gentrification. This one, between 2015 and 2021, 61 residential units were constructed in the city. And for a six-year period, you're averaging about 10, 10 units per, per year. Now, not all the units are based on 10 per year. We had, I think we had some years where there were more units built than some years where there were no units built. Fiscal impact. RFE process went out, city select, selected a consultant, there's a grant in place for the housing element, which pays for a portion. I don't know exactly what the proportion of the, of the grant to, to the cost of the entire housing element is. And recommendation is that you adopt Planning Commission Resolution 2020-2003, recommending approval of the sixth housing element to the city council, and then you approve the negative declaration for the six-cycle housing element, and recommend approval of the declaration, neg-deck, to the city council. So, here ends my presentation, but in looking at your faces, I can see that you, I can see that you have questions. So, this will be the time to, to ask those questions. Thank you very much.
Okay, fellow commissioners, this is the time to ask for questions and perhaps get some clarification on a whole bunch of stuff that we, we have here to look at in order to make a decision on how we're going to approach this for approval or, or not, although I don't know what options we have if there's not approval on it. Perhaps, if I may, I'm going to make that my first question. So, we approve this. What we have here goes to the city council as a recommendation that they adopted. If we were to decide not to approve this, and the council took us at our advice and also decided not to approve it, where does this go?
Well, that's...
So, yeah, so I would, I guess as a part of that, myself and staff would, would basically request what programs or different facets that the planning commission would like to see in order to get to a recommendation of approval. Not approving a housing element has a plethora of negative ramifications. I'm not going to go through all of them, we would be here all night. So in no way is the planning commission wedded or, you know, handcuffed to what is before you tonight. However, I would strongly advise that the planning commission, at the very least, get to a recommendation of approval of whatever you guys would like to see, if that makes sense. So, if what's before you tonight, you take umbrage with or have issues with, totally within your purview, but we would strongly, strongly advise you, no matter how long it takes, to get to at least a recommendation of approval, whatever that may be.
So council, I want to thank you for that, because I asked that question knowing that what you just said was that, because we, I have been on a couple of these things in the past, but I wanted our fellow commissioners to know that it's not just us rubber-stamping this, yet quite likely, we do need to come up, as council has said, with something that we would recommend, changes within this that we could approve and recommend to the city council for their approval of it. So, thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I may add, Mr. Chairman, my apologies. Think about this as, as a gateway to, to opening up the process. A not recommending approval basically closes that door significantly, and, and as, as Mr. City Attorney mentioned, it has implications for the city. So what we're, and if you were going to not recommend approval, then you have to do a host of findings for not recommending it, and then city council would consider it, and if they don't agree, then it has to come back, and, and this kind of prolongs the process because we're already, we're already kind of running behind. Now, this is not to put pressure on you by any, by any stretch of the imagination. You're an independent body. You are entitled to review and, and make comments on the housing element, but by asking that questions, I think you understand the pros and cons of the actions that need to be taken. So, you open the door, more discussion, the process moves on as opposed to just, you know, blocking that bridge.
So fellow commissioners, questions for staff?
I don't have any questions.
I do. I just have, I'm sure you touched upon this on our, one of our meetings, but let's say we do go ahead and recommend to approve it to go to council, and for instance, say there's a passage in your, the, oh my God, I'm sorry, my mind just went blank, with the proposal, could we always in the future amend whatever it is we see fit that needs to be amended due to, you know, I don't know, evolution, not evolution, oh my God, I am so sorry. Evolving, yes, thank you.
Yeah, evolving, yeah. Well, that question is yes and no, and it depends on what is the nature, because once we take this as it is, and hopefully the city council takes it as it is, and we submit it to HCD, and, and the cer, the certification process, we're allowed to make changes to the housing element, but not structural changes. So we can, we can make changes in editing and, and language, et cetera, et cetera, but we can't really make some structural changes. And I think Mr. City Attorney can, can touch up on what would be considered a structural change, et cetera.
Right, correct. So this, this process involves HCD, which is a, which is a state agency. They must review and basically certify it. Of course, it's, I guess it's somewhat common sense that, of course, a city could not have a housing element, say, here's what we're going to do, HCD certifies it, and then we come back and change it wholesale. We cannot do that. We don't plan to do that, we will not do that. However, should there be a, you know, and I'll use the best-case example here, let's say a specific program in the housing element is extremely successful. So we, we've, we go through this process, it is certified by, by HCD, we would have no issue with, let's say, maybe expanding that program, saying, hey, this has worked out very well, we want this more, this effectuates all of the goals and, and kind of needs that our housing element has addressed, and HCD is certified, we want to expand this. We would be comfortable with that. Of course, the opposite side of that coin is that if a program is being very successful and for whatever reason, there's a, you know, a motivation and a desire to curtail it or stop that program, then we could have problems and issues, once again, due to this, I don't want to say dance, but kind of, you know, back and forth between the city and then the state via HCD.
If there aren't any questions, I would like to make a motion to approve and adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Number 2022-003, recommending approval of the sixth cycle housing element to the city council.
If I could, Commissioner, we haven't yet opened up the public hearing, so we'll need to do that, this is a public hearing item. And I do have just a couple of comments and, and kind of a question or two. But first, I want to know that I, I wrote this down because I really, I'm going to use this. You addressed us as the shoemakers of the city. I like that, because that's kind of what we do here. So, I did note, you know, the decrease in the census population is about 800, and for a nine-tenth of a square mile city is somewhat impactful, but overall, we were probably a bit higher in density with just those numbers, and indeed, we could be actually higher than the numbers that are here. But one of the things that you did note about in talking about more homes versus less homes or the current number of them, in a community that is as old as ours is, there's a lot of aged housing stock, and new homes versus old will more likely not decrease their cost, but increase them. And those, those effects, you know, are, can be felt there, which means that we will need to be sure that we, this element has some structure in it that will allow for people who want to come into our community to be able to afford these newer, higher-priced homes. And, and I'm sure many of us who've been here, even just a few years, but often, most of us have been here for our, our entire lives, or, or most of them, we have seen that. An older home that was small, built on a relatively large piece of property, it is demolished, and two large homes are built on that, most likely to be perhaps owner-occupied in a rental or both rental, it doesn't make any difference. But the overall pricing for the resale of those new homes will be considerably more than what it would have been to have bought that small little house that was on the underdeveloped property. So, it is important that we have in place language that allows the development of programs that can help and assist those in our community to be able to afford these new improved homes. And we get into this language of, you know, low, moderately, slightly higher, moderately, high-priced. It's, it's, it's all just language, it's driven by market, but programs adapt to the market factors when we are allowing for people to have some sort of assistance to help them to be able to afford to be in our community. And one of the things that I did like in your presentation, to talk about the structure of this housing element needs to fit into our general plan, and that's something that I hope many of you have the opportunity at some time in the future to be part of a general plan update, because that really is the whole, it's, for those of you who are into automobiles, it's kind of like a, tear it down to the frame, you know, and, and then put it back together for a rebuild on it, and that's kind of what we do in the, in the general plan, where we look at each and every element, and the housing element is just one. So, I just wanted to make those comments, get your, your take on that, and this has been an excellent amount of time you have spent working on this and preparing this, and then presenting it to us in a way in which I'm sure we've all been able to understand it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Just to kind of tee off some of your comments, now, earlier this evening, you heard about an applicant talking about SB9. Now, SB9, if some of you, you know, basically is going to require for allowing development on properties that are Zone R1. Now, you know, so you're, you have a lot of properties in the city that are currently Zone R1. So, the next wave of development in the city might be those R1 properties that somebody's going to want to come and basically subdivide into smaller parcels. They could be as small as, you know, 1,200 square feet, and lot itself has to be at least 24, 2,500 square feet for them to be able to subdivide it. But that is another wave and trend that you may see. So, this, this idea that only those bigger homes are going to, are going to engender the higher housing prices, well, what do you see what developers are going to start charging when they start utilizing SB1 as, as a tool of development? You know, they're going to want to go market rate, and, and, you know, you can either pay or, or go somewhere else, kind of a thing. So, the, the unfortunate thing for cities, well, let me put it this way, for first-time homebuyers, there are programs available from the state. And if you're a first-time homebuyer, you can apply for, you know, you know, funding or financing of homes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Those are there, but, you know, as long as, you know, your, 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 the property in question is less than a particular dollar amount in value, once you start getting to the point where the loan amount starts getting bigger and bigger, some of those, some of those state funds don't usually, don't usually help very much unless you, you want to come up with some significant down payment. So, first-time homebuyers have an advantage and also have a disadvantage. As far as the city is concerned, you touch upon the general plan. To me, that is the most critical thing that, that, that the city can do at this particular time, is to set a timetable to get that general plan to be updated. Once your general plan is updated, I think it's going to provide additional flexibility, you know. What, what, what is the trend? You know, are we going to be, start having like mixed-use commercial zones, are you going to have residential and, and, and commercial uses? Are you going to be able to up the density? Because if for the six-cycle, we are allow, we are allocated 331 units, who knows what the seventh cycle is going to be? I can think, in, in HCD's mind, they're thinking, oh, yeah, SB9, they should be able to be able to provide more housing units. So our next housing cycle could be 400, could be 400 and plus housing units, and we're going to be scratching our heads, where are we going to put them? And, and, you know, one of the comments we, we gathered during our public participation was parking, you know, the, the issue of parking. So, I mean, there are so many issues on the table, and I think that the best approach is to take them one at a time, understand what they are, and, and just proceed with policies. From the HCD standpoint, they want to see programs and policies, and as long as we have those programs and policies... And as long as we have those programs and policies and we follow through, I think our housing element will be fine.
And, and thank you for that. And that did bring me to one thing that I've written here that I overlooked because I can't even read my own scribble sometimes, that, that, that a decrease in population density has an impact on some of what was in this report or an increase, decrease or an increase, I should say, of both ways. Because there is probably studies that have been done for correlations between the closeness, the density in a community of people and education and economic, you know, impacts on that community. And also, another item that was always big on me, and I don't mind saying this, but in some previous times when we did general plan updates, I wanted to see more open space designated. But as time went by, it became obvious that those designated overlay zones, a lot like the card club overlay zone was done in the past, it was never going to happen. And so in later general plan updates, those areas were, the overlay was taken off of it for, for open space. Because that has a great impact upon the health and welfare of our community.
Absolutely.
And so that's one of the reasons why I'm so happy you presented this information. And at this point in time, there's probably not anything we can pull out of the hat to remedy it. Yet I believe it gives us all the opportunity to see how these documents, which ultimately become policies and procedures, regulations, laws, impact the future, not just in the next few years, but going forward for a generation. So thank you again for that. We do appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for staff on this? Thank you, sir. So at this time. Okay, at this time, if you can all accommodate us, before we start the, the, the public hearing, we would like to take a five-minute recess.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to call back and order the planning commission meeting. And so we have had the staff report on Item A1.
Chair Winford, there was just a slight addition myself and staff wanted to make, just so everyone is, is crystal clear, kind of what's going on tonight. Recall that we had this the first time. It went through the planning commission, went through the City Council. We then submitted it to HCD. HCD did, did provide this kind of letter of comments, questions, and, and concerns, which I believe was attached to the, to the, to the, to the agenda packet. And so those, those comments and questions will be addressed in the housing element. Nothing structural, substantive, or programmatic is likely to change. However, HCD does, you know, prefer certain format. They like certain things repeated again and again. And so just so, you know, I don't want you to think that what you approve tonight, if there is a slight modification, it's not, we weren't, you know, trying to pull a fast one, we didn't change anything. There's just certain things that HCD, formatting-wise, hey, can you kind of expand on information that isn't here? Hey, this is in Section 1. Can you put it in Section 6 and 7 as well? Stuff like that, we may, you know, we, we likely will change, once again, just to respond to, to HCD. But the foundational, programmatic aspects and items of the housing element, if approved tonight or if approved with recommendations from, from you all, will, will remain with what exactly you guys provide us with, if that makes sense. So we're not going to get approval and then rewrite it and then bring it to City Council.
Okay, so we've gotten our staff report. I'm going to open the public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this particular item, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
In a second.
I'll second it.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Roman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Navarro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Member Rodriguez?
Yes.
Chair Member Winford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So at this time, could we have someone make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, or I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. I'd like to second the motion that Commissioner Roman made in regards to...
Apologies, while I totally understand that, I just want to make sure we don't have any, even though there was no public speakers, it's better if Commissioner Roman just wants to remake the motion and then second it. We don't want to call back prior. Thank you.
Thank you for the support, Commissioner Rodriguez. I appreciate it. I make a motion to adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number 2022-003, recommending approval of the sixth cycle housing element to the City Council.
I'd like to second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second before the planning commission. Any further discussion?
Would those two be two separate or would it have to be one?
Okay.
No, and so, but, but, but the...
Because it's an approval of the negative, would that be a separate motion?
Yeah, that's fine. Since, since we have a current motion on it, let's handle that one and then we can make a separate one.
And then we'll do the negative declaration after that.
Can I get a second, please?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have one or two motions before us.
Two.
One.
We have one.
Okay, thank you. So we have motion before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Roman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Navarro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Member Rodriguez?
Yes.
Chair Member Winford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then I would also like to make a motion to approve the negative declaration for the sixth cycle housing element and recommend approval of the negative declaration of the sixth cycle housing element to the City Council.
I'll second it.
Do we have a motion and a second for approval of the negative declaration? Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Roman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Navarro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Member Rodriguez?
Yes.
Chair Member Winford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Well, moving on on our agenda, we are, and I may wait to Item C, discussion items. I see none here. Item D is oral staff.
There's consent calendar. Consent calendar.
Did I miss something?
Item B, the consent calendar.
Thank you so much. I just want you all to know, I scribbled all over this because I didn't have a pad up here. My sincere apologies on that. Yes, Item B is the consent calendar. This is where we waive reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. The planning commission can waive the reading in full of these ordinances and resolutions and declare that said titles, which appear on the public agenda, shall be determined to have been read by title and further reading waived. Anyone who wants to pull the items, item off for discussion may do so. If not, we will take it in one vote.
Correct, yeah. Just so there's clear, we have two items on the consent calendar, the waiver and then the proclaimed state of emergency. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, seeing and hearing none, then we will take a roll call vote on the consent calendar.
We need to move in a second or...
We need a motion in a second.
I make a motion to waive the reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda.
And then also, so just, just so we're clear, the motion would be to approve the consent calendar in full. That's all we need.
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar in full.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Roman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Navarro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Member Rodriguez?
Yes.
Chair Member Winford?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we get to move to Item C, of which it's discussion items, and I see none there. I, through my scribble, I see none. All right, then we move to Item D, oral staff reports. Staff, do we have any reports?
Did we do the, the declaration of the state emergency?
Correct, yeah. That was, that was a part of the consent calendar.
Okay, I make a motion...
No, no, we're good, we're good. Already approved.
Oh, Patrick, okay.
Already approved. As for oral staff reports, I have none. Do you want to introduce yourself or something?
I am, oh, I couldn't even... Just myself. I am chair and vice chair and commissioners. I am Mary Ann Marks, and I'm working as your interim community development director. I'm happy to be here. We've got some additional staff starting tomorrow, so hopefully, we're going to be able to start catching up and really get things moving in the department and make sure that we're moving forward.
Thank you, Mary Ann. We look forward to working with you.
Yes, welcome to our city.
Thank you.
Welcome. And yes, I will ditto that. We look forward to working with you and additional staff. If I could, I realize that this is probably more appropriate for oral commissioner reports, but because it's staff time here, can we have the availability going forward in the future to have a printed packet if we so request it and want to come by and pick it up for our agenda?
Yes, I, I believe that was available this time, if you wanted it. Just let us know. We'll make sure something gets printed.
All righty.
And also, if anyone has questions prior to a meeting, in the past, I've been in cities where I have regular meetings with planning commission, one at a time for the Brown Act. But I'm happy to have anybody come in and go over the agenda or any items on it because sometimes it just helps to understand things if you've talked them through prior.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we have the oral commissioner reports. Let's see, we'll start down here with Commissioner Roman.
Just, Mary Ann, we welcome you to the City of Hawaiian Gardens, and we look forward to working with you. And then I want to thank the, my other commissioners for having faith in me as your next vice chair. So thank you to all of you.
Welcome, Mary Ann. Thank you. And hopefully, we get to meet the next staff as well. That's very important to us because I do have residents calling us constantly with our staff, but I am now happy that you're here and hopefully, we can help. Pavel, thank you for showing up tonight, and hopefully, we'll have an answer for you. I do have a question. Anything on the beautification program? I know you're new, Mary Ann, but like an estimate time of when are people going to be able to be contacted? Because I do have residents calling me on that.
Well, I know that that is under Selena's jurisdiction and also Gloria, who had surgery and has been out. She took an extra week, but she's due back next week. So once she's back, Selena's back this week, then next week, I'm going to start staff meetings and find out where we are on everything and get it, get us moving.
Yes, if you can just update me with that information.
I will, as soon as I have it.
And then I'm also seeing a lot of construction being done on 226 and Norwood Boulevard. And I'm very happy. And I also see that they're working on behind, I believe is 216th and Carson. They're moving along with the 711 that they're going to be building there. And then where the old city hall used to be, I'm seeing that they're renovating pretty fast on that as well. So I'm happy that the city's coming along with that.
Good, yeah. I think building's been pretty consistent about getting out and getting things approved in for its best.
Yes, I also did pass by 226 and Arlene, and then I'm seeing the construction hopefully being done on those homes. And then on Clarkdale and the next one on Ibex. So I'm actually happy to see that. It's moving forward as well.
We've got quite a few ADU applications coming in too. So we'll get to see some more.
As well, yeah. And hopefully, we can get something with that SB9 so we can get our residents moving with that too. Thank you.
I don't really have much to say. Just welcome aboard, Mary Ann. Looking forward to working with you and the new staff. Hopefully, we'll be able to meet them possibly, hopefully, in the near future, once they're settled in. Other than that, just a reminder, we have our city carnival on April 8th night, or yeah, 8th, 9th, and the 10th. I know yesterday in the...
I know yesterday, in the council meeting, they were announcing ticket sales, you know, 10 tickets. You buy a book, I'm sorry, a sheet. I'm not exactly sure of the cost, but I know if you buy a pre-sale sheet, one ticket is valid for all the rides, whereas if you buy tickets at the carnival, you will have to produce whatever amount of tickets for each ride. So, I think it's better if people will, you know, purchase those pre-sale tickets. You know, not only are you enjoying, you know, rides, one ticket, you know, for, I'm not exactly sure, I think it's like $40 or so, but don't quote me on that. You know, you get to take advantage of that and also, you know, get to go back, and hopefully, this will start the, it'll seem like a grand reopening of Hawaiian Gardens. My last thing is, I just want to congratulate our new council member, Mr. Mike Gomez. I know he's, you know, he was a council member, former mayor here a few years ago, so it's good to see him on board. Yeah, and that's pretty much about it. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to point out the same thing as Commissioner Rodriguez in regards to 226 construction moving along. It's by my house, so my kids are always asking, you know, Mom, when is it going to come through? So, it's finally coming along, so I'm happy to see that. My children are very excited in regards to carnival, because the first time I actually purchased a home here, that's the first thing we went to, you know, when I settled in. So, seeing that, coming back to the city, it's a big relief. You know, it makes us feel like we're getting back to normality, which is what we're, you know, seeking now after COVID. And all the construction going along, it makes us feel, as citizens, more secure, you know, that we're moving towards our goal, you know, making sure that our city is growing. So, I'm really happy for that, and I'm glad you're joining our city. You know, we're a small city, but we do care a lot about our, you know, all of our people here, so, as you will see. So, I'm glad. Welcome.
Well, once again, welcome, Mary Ann, and thank you so much, and fellow commissioners. This carnival is something I have looked forward to since I was as tall as this table. Just a little trivia, as you unfortunately get from me from time to time, because I've been around for so long, but you know, we had these Hawaiian Gardens carnivals even before we were incorporated as a city. They were sponsored by the Hawaiian Gardens Lions Club. And often, we use them on what would become the city of Lakewood Park that the Lions Club helped put in before we were incorporated. Always kind of a little sore spot for how they got to annex that area over there that was a community park put together by our local community. But nonetheless, we've had these carnivals, and I'm hopeful that it someday in the future, we will be able to, once again, enjoy a parade that kind of brings everybody out on the curbs of our streets here to watch lots of fun go down. And as we all know, we always like to see the animals and the bands and the equestrians, and it's always was a lot of fun. So, hopefully, someday in the not-too-distant future, we'll be able to enjoy that again. And once again, as everybody has mentioned, the new construction is just fabulous. I am so excited to see that. I would really like to find out if we are going to have a small pool or spa in that area over there. They're putting in a lot of area for people to stay in what seemed to be an unimaginable space to develop into anything commercial, and I think this is going to be a great gateway entrance into our community from the South. So, that's fabulous. And I do have one thing. Can we agendize for our next meeting, information about the beautification program? Just as a discussion, because we rarely have item C for discussion, we could just put that on there. I believe that would be appropriate. And also, if we could, this will help us get an update about projects that are going on, and for Mary Ann, for you and staff, to get an idea about what's going on. Could we just kind of get a generalized update of the larger development programs, of larger developments that are going on? And just a, you know, brief sentence or two, report about where it's at, okay?
Can I add one more to the agenda? And the SB nine, just to see where we're at? Thank you, Mary Ann.
Patrick, so I have a question. Last meeting that we had, I brought up the subject of live entertainment, more specifically like karaoke's and all that. I had one of the businesses approach me and ask me what he can do in order to apply to have live entertainment, more specifically like a karaoke during the day. And I just wanted to know what happened with that.
And so, Vice Chair Rodriguez, I apologize. I'm not sure if staff reached out to you on that. Clearly, I don't believe that they did. Once again, I would probably need a bit more information on the specific business, in that those types of uses can depend on what it's owned, what its existing CUP says, if it has a CUP, et cetera, et cetera. So, maybe after tonight's meeting, we can touch base. I can get the, kind of the specific details of the exact business, and we can get you an answer probably before next meeting via just an email.
Okay, that would be great. You know, I can meet with you after. But more specifically, I want staff to contact, you know, the business owner and answer his questions.
Make sure you give us, well, when we talk, the actual business, because I saw one go through my desk that was approved, already been taken care of, I'm not sure.
Any other, any go-backs, anything here? Well, at this point in time, on the agenda, we've come to the item F, which is adjournment. So, I don't know if we're going to have much discussion on this, but would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn to the next special planning commission meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to the next special planning commission meeting to be held on April 6, 2022, at 6:00 PM here at the council chambers.
Motion in a second?
I'll second it.
A motion in a second, and we'll just put you through this one more time. Mr. City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Roman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Navarro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Member Rodriguez?
Yes.
Chair Member Winford?
Yes, we stand adjourned.